The all set.
Carol, you're all set? Carol, are you ready? Let's call the meeting to order, please. See Paul Bowden, Joe Shanata, both excused. Mike be seated tonight.
Thank you.
First item, consideration of the meeting minutes for August 28th, 2024. CJ, Steve, Mike. Okay, so we have a forum to approve those minutes. Anyone have any changes?
I just had a question. Line 198 states that vice chair vote, okay. Yeah. 198. It said Vice Chair Bowden stated that he thinks that they should invite town engineer for the next meeting and that he would like to speak to town manager Karina Park about this as well. I remember Paul Bowden saying that he didn't think we need to talk to Ray and that it was our decision. But I'm not sure if it was this meeting, he said that, or a different meeting. And I know he's not here to clarify that. But when I read that, it's like, well, I know he said he didn't want to speak to Ray Corber and get his input on this. I just don't remember what meeting that was. So I guess I'm just, I'm not sure if that was.
I don't know if anyone wasn't here.
Oh, you don't. Right, so he was leading the.
He was the chair.
The chair that night.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
I mean, the sentence before this is that Carol pointed out that the board should have a discussion with the town engineer, Ray Corber. And then next one says, Ray Bowden stated that he thinks they should invite. It's just not the way I remember it.
It's not the way I remember it either, okay.
Um. I either want to cross that whole sentence out, or it might be even better is just wait and approve these after when Paul's here. Can weigh in. I mean, I I know, I'm positive, at one point at some meeting, he said no to that. Because I was, I was speaking in favor of doing that and he said no. I just don't remember. It was this meeting because we've discussed this at other meetings.
But from what I understand, this is the meeting where the board really got into it.
Really got into it. And I believe he said no. So do we want to just cross that whole sentence off?
He's asking.
What's that?
He's asking Mike and Steve, what do you think? Do you want to wait for Paul?
No, I agree with you. At some point, I remember him stating that that was a necessary, that we do what we needed to do without raise input or knowledge of whatever.
You guys want to cross it out or you want to wait till Paul gets back? Okay.
That way, we're definitely sure, but I feel pretty confident that he wanted to just go ahead.
Um, I would say, is Paul going to be at the next meeting? Will he be back, you know?
Oh, he's way back.
Oh, is he?
Oh, he's gonna be here tonight.
All right, well, let's wait one more meeting.
So his next meeting is October ninth, I think it's the ninth.
Okay.
Yeah. So our motion to continue cable this until October the ninth.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continuation of the meeting minutes for September 11th, 2024. One, two, three. So we've got a form for those.
I didn't have anything with those.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
There a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So three yeses and one abstaining. Okay. Next item of the agenda, sign of Alex Ray Dyna.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we're going to be having a discussion about this when we get started. We kind of have a discussion about this. But we want to focus on the fact that we're going to bring something.
I guess.
And, you know, we need special exceptions behind all of that, so.
I guess if I may, you know, it's according to the Gilbert decision, you know, we really can't control what the sign says. Right, so we just change, isn't he just changing the wording? That's what I'm saying. He's just changing.
What's, what sign are we talking about?
I can't, I can't hear Carol at all. I'm sorry.
Hey, it's a, it's the V-shaped sign, the great big one, the billboard has two sides to it. But it's, it's constructed like a V. And so it's the Common Man Restaurant.
Is located on the Common Man Restaurant parcel.
It's no. It's located off-premise from the Common Man. It's on the lot that's going to have the diner.
But right now, it's currently an off-premise sign.
Correct.
It's going to stay an off-premise sign.
No, now it's going to be, it's going to have to do with the diner.
So it's going to be an on, it's going to go from an off-premise to an on-premise.
Well, and possibly it's going to be split. I don't know. Alex hasn't given me a sign, but I just want to know how to address the sign.
I guess, who owns the land we're sitting on now?
Um, Alex Ray North LLC.
Okay. Who's going to own it once the wording is changed?
Um, well, that's the one that's Alex North LLC. The other one, the Common Man is owned by Alexander Ray trustee of something or other trust.
So, okay, so it's going from off-premise to on-premise. If you're going to use it for the diner.
Well, he possibly is going to use it for both, so.
Right. You just said that, that Gilbert decision, there isn't such thing as an on-premise or off-premise sign anymore, technically, because okay, if a sign is permitted.
I'm going to take your word for it. I'm just going to take your word for it.
Okay, if a sign is, well, then maybe I'm wrong. Is, if a sign is permitted, you, the owner of that sign can put up, or at least let me put it this way, the planning board can't control what, what the, what the words say, that if we approve the location, the height, the depth, the width, the all of that stuff, setbacks, all of that's approved, they can put on it what they want.
So this is, this predates, I mean, it predates.
Okay, well, I, I see the issue is not what, what's on the sign and who's located, that it's an oversized billboard. It does not meet, right? Is that, is that true? That it does not meet the dimensions
Correct.
of that. And we've allowed that to stay because it's been grandfathered. That grandfather technically has expired according to the initial change, correct?
Didn't we have something that all signs had to come into compliance in 2015 or 26?
Yeah, whatever the date was.
Then, but then there were, there was the pending sign about, I mean, the Supreme Court case about signage. And so we just kind of sat on it. We didn't do anything about it.
Right, we didn't enforce it, but that didn't make that vote go away. I, I guess I would just stick to the, to the to the rules, that, that the sign that's there, they can put on it whatever they want. They can put on the diner, they can put on the Common Man, they can put on both. They can put on a big smiley face, whatever they want to put on that is fine. But by changing the use of that property and going through site plan review, that sign needs to come into a compliance size-wise, everything wise, size-wise, setback-wise, height-wise. That'd be, that'd be my thought.
Well, I mean, did you address it during site plan review?
It was not, was located on that map as a, on the site plan as a existing.
Well, you had talked about using that sign to direct traffic so that they knew that they had two outs, that they were going to be able to go out either way.
We did. We didn't talk about the fact that that was an oversized billboard. It was set, I mean, I didn't even know that was an existing sign. They put it on there as part of their, their new site plan.
Yeah, it's a pre-existing sign. But it's an off-premise sign for the Common Man, so.
Again, that, the concept of off-premise, I just don't think should be part of the conversation whether, how you interpret Gilbert, but.
Well, you have to read it to determine whether it's on-premise or off-premise. So you're regulating a court of content if you say.
So, but, but if you go through a measuring tape and you determine that it's an oversized billboard and they come in for site plan review, and they did not ask for a, an oversized, it just, they just showed what the location was, not the, that it was over. Assigned in that location. But not an oversized bill.
Okay, so my directions are to ask him to bring it into compliance?
I'm just speaking for myself, that would be, that would be my thought, unless they want to go to the ZBA.
You know, that's a possibility.
They have that option and go and say, look, this sign's been here for what, 40 years?
Yeah, since before the sign ordinance.
But, but for us to say, oh, you, you know, you get away with it, I'm not sure that we should, just because they included it on a sign ordinance to them when they came forward.
Right.
And when we talked about adding that directional sign on the back, I mean, we talked about signage, but it was never, we never okayed an oversized sign.
Okay. I mean, I think it's, you know, pretty hard, even though it says in the ordinance, take away somebody's grandfathering. That's my opinion. I've been there 40 years to all of a sudden say, gee, just because you're relettering it.
Well, it's the, I mean, change of use of the property. I think that trays it more than the relettering.
Yep, but he could, could he leave it up as it is? Just say the Common Man.
Well, he could leave it as it is. You just have, have to have signage separately for the new use.
Well, then he'd have to come back into the site plan.
You want to say something?
Well, I was going to say, if they put in another sign, then it would have to go for site plan and it would have to be in accordance with things, so.
And up with another sign.
I know, but I'm saying that, that we're just saying if we leave that original one there and they decide to put another sign up.
Well, how are you just describing putting another sign up? Are you taking, talking about taking that one down?
No, it depends on putting it in a different location. Actually, they just want to use that sign, right?
Right.
That's, okay.
Steve, you have anything?
Oh. I assume he's going to take it down when it's there now, right?
That's not what he's requesting.
He wants to reuse it.
Wants to reuse the same size and location.
He'll say different things on it, though, right?
Right. So I guess, so two options really, or three. He can leave it as is and change the lettering. He can go to the ZBA for a special exception, or he can take it down and, or bring it into compliance. So how do you guys want to, think we should proceed? I.
I would say give him the options and see which way he wants to go with it.
Well, no, because if you say that, he's just going to say, okay, I'll just reletter it.
Okay.
I mean.
Well, you were talking earlier about removing grandfather rights.
Yeah.
Right? Well, if that's the case, then he has to bring it into compliance.
Okay, I, I would say leave it as is. Okay.
Kind of old and rundown, isn't it? Don't want that on the news.
Again, that's, if, if, if we say he can leave the sign on there at the size it is, he can fix it up and change the lettering and do whatever he wants. That's, that's the question. Um. I guess I just thought it should have been brought up, you know, to draw that on a map and say, we're going to put a sign there without saying that we're going to leave the, the oversized one that's there. Um, there's other oversized billboards in town
Right.
that have gone past the deadline.
Right.
Um.
Right.
And there've been oversides ones that have been changed since the deadline, too.
They've been updated, yes, but there hasn't been a whole change of use on any of them that I know of.
Well, no, that's true.
Okay, so the thought comes in, where do we draw the line then? Right?
Find out what he wants to do.
It says right here.
Well, we know what he wants to do.
He wants to switch it from the Common Man to the new diner.
Right. What I don't know is if he's going to have both on there. I don't know. Um, he just, his people called and asked about whether they could just use that sign as is and, you know, re, it's a new face on it, so.
I mean.
What do you think?
I think he's just be allowed to keep it as is and make the changes.
Works for me.
Go ahead. No, you said what I, you know.
I don't know, right? I see that point, too. I'm looking around at what the other ones in town are and the fights we're going to have with, with people if we, if we say everybody's got to do it as soon as they change something about the property that it's on.
You know, and some of them are, really are off-premise, so how are they ever going to come in? Unless they build something there, they're never going to come in for site plan.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, without naming names, there's several big signs in the town that, that I mean, probably won't ever need to come in for site plan. Go ahead, make a motion and we'll vote.
I'll make, someone make a motion. I'll make a motion that he can leave the sign as is because it's grandfathered. Does anyone want to second that?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Shaking your head? Great.
I'll say aye, yeah. You can do it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next one, I'm going to start myself here. Um, uh, this apparently is a miscommunication between me and the town engineer, so um, I have an apology here. I wish to express my sincere apologies for the miscommunications between myself and the town engineer about the Pemmy Base Camp. And the Nest. After the Pemmy Base Camp hearing, I was out straight. I remember talking to town engineer Ray by phone, uh, Corber by phone about whether the planning board had approved the application and were, he asked me if there were any conditions of approval. I told him, I believe I told him that I thought there was at least one. Um, and he said he was going to listen to the end of the videotape to see what the conditions were. And at some point, um, town engineer Corber did talk to me about the ambiguous easement on the plan and that it was not okay to show an ambiguous easement on a plan without identifying it. I can't remember exactly when that conversation took place, but um, because we have a lot of conversations about a lot of plans. So, for example, he pointed out that the ski trail reached right up to the boundary of the Noriki property and then started up again on the other side of the Noriki property boundary line. Uh, the easement that was ambiguous, it was not really acceptable, and I agreed that ambiguous easements were not really okay. So he asked me if the planning board had made it a condition of approval that the ski trail not show up on the Noriki property and that the ski trail easement just hop over the Noriki property. The answer was no, it was not a specific condition of approval. However, I remember saying that Mark uh, but uh, Bogosian had made promises about not showing the easement on the lot and that promises appeared to be endorsed by the planning board and relied on the planning board for making the decision. However, as Ray confirmed from listening to the tape and me later checking the draft minutes, that it was not an express condition of approval by the planning board. So just prior to the last meeting on September 11th, I saw the final plan with the trail easement, ski trail easement on it and the ski trail easement that had been recorded in August. I did not realize that the recorded ski trail easement was in direct response to raise various technical memorandums until today. So I deeply regret not paying closer attention to what was being communicated. Um, I understand the negative impact my inattention has had on all of you and it is not my intention to mislead anyone or cause any harm. Um, so I take full responsibility for my error and I assure you that I'll take steps to ensure that I spend more time to clearly communicate with the town engineer so this miscommunication doesn't happen again. You know, it was over many community, you know, many conversations. Um, you know, in a snippet here and a snippet there, so. I, I believe that my inattention caused some of this problem.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. So it's not really a public, um, comment period, but I think, you know, some of the butters here, I'd like to give them a chance to speak. When anyone would like to speak? Make, make sure your microphone is on.
We put the battery in.
Is the battery in there?
No.
Do you want to use, use the one at the table there?
I didn't see it anywhere.
So this Holger Nurecki from 16 Yellow Birch, I'm here with my wife Vanessa. Um, so thank, thank you, Carol. Understand that this was difficult. And I, I'm a little bit unclear about what the current status is of the Nest. Um, has it been approved or is it pending approval or?
It's already been approved.
It's been approved.
Right.
But the Mylar has not been signed.
Right. We were just waiting for the town engineer to, you know, um, dot his i's and cross his t's.
Okay. So in that event, uh, you know, we, we did have an agreement before that we would not have a ski trail that was shown on a plan on our property. Um, I also understand that he's since tried to record or has recorded an easement on our property uh, granting himself access to a ski trail. Um, which we have not granted. Somehow he was still able to record that. It's not an easement that we granted as owners of the property.
Okay. I'd like to add that.
Sure.
Because we didn't give our consent or any consideration, don't believe it's actually validly recorded um, and probably could be challenged at any point in the future, even though it has been recorded, it creates a problem with the title, the chain, the title.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I, I mean, the other, there's a lot of issues as far as like the ski trails in general, we really aren't commenting on that. We're just commenting
You're only concerned about your own lot.
The side area because actually part of that trail does go across the back of our property, but we're talking about the side area that acts, that uh, ends up on Yellow Birch. Um, there's also a drainage easement there, which was part of our discussion at the last meeting with Mark, was that if they do create a trail and start driving snow cats there, that disrupts the drainage easement that's already there. And there's actually a swale and piping um, that goes with the, the drainage swell. Um, so it's not just that it wasn't recorded properly, that he doesn't have the right to take an easement there without our consent. But it's also that there's an existing swell that if they.
Excuse me, say existing trail over your property.
Swell.
A swell hub site.
Yeah. It's on the side of our property. Um, that was created and, and indicated on several maps, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, that were recorded with the declaration originally. It shows a drainage area there. Um, so it's not just that it wasn't recorded properly, but it's also going to remove drainage that it currently exists.
Okay.
And I'll also add that there's also a lot of language in the association documents about, um, you know, us having a drainage easement there. So it's the part of the, um, ski trail that he's recorded is in violation of the association documents. So we don't believe that the recording of ski trails, um, on a property is valid.
Okay, okay, yeah.
We're not really commenting on any other.
Right, no, I mean, yeah, I appreciate that.
Parts of that trail because it doesn't really impact us, but that does.
And you know.
And I'd just like to add that we did talk with Mark about what we believe we could do instead of a trail is that we could have a reciprocal easement with him um, whereby he would allow us, he would just put language in there that we can do whatever we want with our property irrespective of the easement, but that, that easement that we would grant to him would allow people to access that area to get to the trail because we don't want to block anyone's access, but we do have to be, you know, cognizant of the fact that we need to have drainage on our lot and also to build a house there eventually. Um, so we're, we're trying to, we've been trying to work with him. We just can't, can't call it a trail because a trail would then create a different structure in that area, which would block the drainage and would be a problem if there were snow cats driving there all season long. Um, but we have offered to give him an easement um, for people to just walk across to get to the trail. We've even offered some type of like maintenance aspect of it, but not, you know, obviously not a snow cat. That would be heavy and would disrupt the drainage.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other butters here that would like to speak?
Well, public, they don't have to be about us, right?
Yeah, or any members of the public, excuse me. I'm, I'll give you a chance because you're the applicant. All right. Okay, attorney Lick is up.
Good evening. Um, just for the record, I'm Derek Lick again from the Oran Reno office representing South Peak. Um, first, uh, on, for your, um, comments earlier, we greatly appreciate it. We understand there was a miscommunication with the town. The only thing I wanted to clarify, uh, well, two points for the board. I understand at the last meeting, there was a lot of aspersions cast at my client for putting easements on the plan after saying that he was not going to do so. For putting easements on the plan after saying that he was not going to do so. And we just want it made abundantly clear that that was done at the request of Ray Corber. And Ray Corber's view was that if there are in fact easements that Mark, uh, my client is asserting, they need to be on the plan. That's part of the town requirements, so. That's why we did it, we weren't trying to go back on our word, we were trying to do what the town asked us to do and that's fine. Um, so just to be clear, we're just trying to do what you guys want, whichever way you want it. We'll, um, we'll do it that way. Um, with respect to the Norreki's concerns and any others, I'm, I'm happy to talk with them and others afterwards. But I want to give the board some comfort. In that really what's going on is apparently a disagreement as to the declaration which governs the entire development. There are provisions in the declaration which gives with the person called the declarant, which is what Mark is and what he stepped into the shoes of. Broad rights to create easements for ski trails, pedestrian trails throughout, just three or four different ones. And they're very broad. And the plan that was recorded with respect to the ski trail easement, partially in response to the request from, from Ray and others. All it did was record. The trails that are currently in existence and have been in existence from the time Mark owned it up to today. And so our view of it is that Mark and the developer is the declarant. Was within his rights um, to create these easements, that's what the declarant says, the declaration says. And that um, we didn't change anything, we didn't do anything different, we are simply mirroring what is already on the ground. The direction from us to the engineers was merely to, to put on record. What exists on the lots today? And then as we come in, we're going to be adding to those over time, but for now it was a show us what's there, so it's absolutely clear. Um, and in our view, that was appropriate. And it clarifies things and allows us to put it on the rec. Um, on these plans to the extent Ray desires them to be there. So there you go, that was it, I just want to make sure we clear the air, Mark was not trying to do anything nefarious or improper. He was merely trying to respond to the, I think the second technical memo Ray Corber provided. Um, where he said that what was on the plan was not sufficient under the town regs and so. He had his engineer do what they requested, so that's all I have unless you guys have any questions.
We can't weigh in on, you know, whether it's right or wrong, as a declarant goes.
No, I completely understand, I mean, and if there's a dispute, I understand, I'm happy to talk with the records or their attorney. We can walk through the documents, there may simply be a disagreement. I get it, that happens sometimes, um, but it's not a really a planning board thing. Um, it's just we put on the plans what we think is there and the engineer thought was theirs, so that's all.
Would you be willing to work something out before we sign the Mylar?
No, um, we want the Mylar signed, it's been held in abeyance, it shows what's there. And to the extent anything changes, I, I can tell you the Mylar that you guys have in front of you merely cross references the plan that's already on record. And so nothing you do with respect to that Mylar changes anything. If there's a change to that Mylar on record for the ski trail easement. It'll be a change and it'll be reflected throughout, so we don't want this project held up. Uh, subdivisions not on their property, not subdividing their property for purposes of this apparent internal dispute.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much, appreciate the time, thank you.
Come on up.
So I appreciate your comments, uh, attorney. However, not accurate, um, fact that those ski trails have always been there, have always been on plans. I have the original engineering plans, which shows that there is no ski trail along our property line. I also have on, on the side, yep. I also have some board meeting minutes from February 22nd of this year. That shows that there are no ski trails on the side of our property line.
Board, what board?
The uh, South Peak HOA board.
Okay, not this board.
Not this board.
Okay, yeah.
I'm happy to, I know if I share these with you guys.
Yeah, please.
Again, sure.
Yeah, and then, then I'll need to end up with those.
Yeah.
For the record.
You guys want to come and watch? Come on over, guys, yeah.
There's no ski trail on our property over here.
Okay.
It also references. This is one that he. Let me just hop to the latest one here. Through the meeting minutes here. And our property is over here. And this ski trail that comes down to Yellow Birch is on the other side of our neighbor, not one our property one. Attorney, you're welcome to take a look if you'd like. Happy to share with you.
So in essence, what they did when they created this recorded document was they created a trail where none had ever existed on any plan. That we've seen. And we've asked Loon Mountain, we've asked Mark Bogosian, we've asked. The HOA board for a plan showing that trail. No one has presented any plan to us showing a trail on our property. The only thing they present, presented was a marketing brochure um, that had no date on it. And we also have seen many other marketing brochures that showed the trail where my husband just pointed it out to you. On the other side of 20 Yellow Birch, not along our line. So even the marketing brochures show it on the other side.
This property, yeah. This is our neighbor's property. And this is the one that a but next, yep, this ski trail goes on the other side.
You have two lots? Okay. I went up and looked around, I couldn't make heads and tails of anything.
And just to also add something, um, South Peak's own. Um, website showed the trail on, did not show a trail on our property line until we raised the issue. And that plan was then changed, we actually have screenshots of the plan before they changed it, which was a couple of months ago. So they updated it and added the trail along our property line. Where it had never been before on their own website. You know, I think what, what we're trying to get at here is that. Whatever the issues are with the trails in general is not necessarily the same as our issues because we have. Again, a situation where they're trying to block our drainage swell, but also. That this was never there to begin with. This is a, a, a very new situation. And in fact, in terms of like more evidence to that effect, last fall, they took down trees. Um, so that they could put a snowcat there. We objected to it, we, we didn't know about it till after the trees were taken down.
These on your land, these trees?
Yes, they were on our land, somebody who has not been identified by, we've asked, but nobody has identified who did this. But they were taken down so that they could drive a snow cannon, so this is not something that has always been there. And they would not have taken down trees, many trees. If it had been there before, we have documented, we, we've documented all this, we have photos to show you all about one of the.
Okay.
So in here. It's also drainage plan that goes that there's drainage.
Which is what this drawing line is.
I think Carol should have a copy of this, since we've looked at it as a board and discussed it, she should have a copy of that to include in the.
Yeah, both of these. Yeah, so anything presented should go to Carol's record.
So. And I just want to make one more comment about, um, sorry, I didn't get the attorney's name, but um, he'd mentioned that there's many, um. Provisions in the HOA declaration that allows for Mr. Bogosian to do this. That's not my interpretation, I'm an attorney as well. Um, that's not my interpretation of the documents, if you read them, it refers to. Land that has already, has not been, so essentially it had to have been recorded that way. Not something that can be done after the land leaves the hands of the declarant and goes to another owner, which is what's happened with our lot. So we didn't buy it from Mark Bogosian, we bought it from a private individual. So this land has been out of the declarant's hands for. Many years now, so I think if you read the, I think a very valid interpretation of the declaration, which also coincides with. Date and federal law is that you can't record an easement on land that has already left the declarant's control. I think that's really where the issue lies, but again. We're only worried about our issue.
Right.
I mean, we're not trying to say that this can't be done at all, but in our case, this was never even a trail. For the last, what's 15 years, 17 years, so.
Okay, the other misstatement that Mr. Lick made was that this was something that the board had requested, right? That, you know, the planning board was requesting that this was done. It was in that meeting that we had all agreed that we actually didn't need to record any kind of easement on this. As long as there were no ski trails on the plants that were being submitted. So it was not that the planning board was insisting that in order to approve this, you need to put. Ski trails, record easements, um. You know, legitimately, et cetera, right? That's something that he took upon himself in order to get this further and further down. Said if you don't approve a plan with ski trails on it, it's harder and harder to undo it, to unravel it.
Anyone else have any questions?
Want my number, I'd go up there and look at it with you sometime.
I'm sorry?
Phone number, I'd go up there and look at it with you.
Oh, sure, I'd be happy to.
Mike, you have anything?
Not right now, thank you.
Cal, do you have anything? No. Karina's in the audience, Karina, do you have anything to add?
I mean, I understand the property owners. Frustration with the way that unfortunately this is all unfolded, but I would just like to reiterate. That the easement document has already been recorded. It was recorded prior to obviously the signing of this Mylar. So whether or not there's a dispute over whether it was done legally or not, I don't think the town can. ascertain, you know, to that point. Um, I guess my caution of not signing this is that. By the planning board not signing this document this evening doesn't change the fact that those. Uh, easements are already recorded. If it comes to fruition that the easements were done, um, you know. Without permission of the landowner and that is proven to be done illegally, then those documents will have to be revised or amended and rerecorded. Um, at, at this rate. It, it doesn't make a difference, it doesn't change the fact that those easements have already been recorded, whether or not the planning board signs them this evening or not. And that's really my only thought on this at this point.
So Karina, it, it's my understanding that's the landowner that granted easement to someone else. Not that someone else comes in and says, I want to be able to have access to your land, so I'm going to go ahead and record an easement to benefit myself.
I, I, again, I'm not a real estate attorney, so I'm not going to try to decipher whether what the HOA did was with, you know. Had legality to it or not, but knowing that those easements are recorded at the Grafton County Registry of Deeds with the book and page. We try our hardest when we are approving subdivisions to address all easements that have been recorded. So I'm not saying. That what they did. Based on the declaration, you know, I, I'm not a real estate attorney, so I can't, I guess refute that point one way or the other. But I will say that whether or not the planning board signs a Mylar with those easements on the current subdivision. They are still there as far as essentially the registry of deeds is concerned.
Right, but I think my position was that would be that you're then essentially. Agreeing to something, knowing that it was, that there is a legitimate concern that it was not recorded properly. Also, just to put on the record, we were never given any notice of this before it was recorded. We found out on our own after the fact. And had we not done that, we would not, not have known that that was done. Then the third thing I'd like to know is who drew up the plan showing, I, I'm assuming that when you recorded that. That ski trail easement that there was a plan presented, but I'd like to know who it was that put the easement there, whether it was Horizon or who it was. Showing it because it isn't there. So I think there's, you know, we have some concerns about how that actually took place, what, what. What transpired to get that, that easement put on there where it had never existed before.
I think those, I think those are questions for the HOA, they're not questions for the planning board. The planning board can only regulate what's within their purview and private easements on private land is not within the planning board's purview.
So I, I'm going to go back to like a couple of meetings ago because that's where we had the agreement that we didn't need to have the ski trails on there. Right, so that's really where the planning board, Mr. Bogosian and myself agreed that there would be plans without ski trails. There's no harm, no foul if there's no ski trails recorded. However, if there are ski trails that are on the maps, that's where there is potential for harm.
If I remember right, he said he wouldn't record them as ski trails, right?
That's correct.
He would still say, you know, possibly there's an easement, just have it unlabeled.
He, he was just going to leave it unlabeled. He, he wasn't going to attach a label to it.
Yeah, and unfortunately, when he presented that to Ray Corber, there was that miscommunication as Carol had mentioned earlier that. When he did present a plan with the easements unidentified on the plan. Ray Corber expressed that that was unacceptable to the town. And obviously that's a disappointment on the town's behalf and, you know, we take responsibility of that. But those events led to a document with the ski trails being recorded after the fact.
I mean, again, I think we'd already brought it to the attention of everybody involved that. There was no plan showing a trail there. So I, I, I keep going back to, you have a situation where somebody created a plan and put a trail there that was never there before. And then recorded it. Without our, our knowledge.
I, I'm also going to add that in the uh, meeting minutes that I provided, there was also language in, correct, uh, uh, from the um, South Peak uh, association. There's language in there that they did want to record ski trails in there, you know, to where they would be. And in a prior, you know, Zoom call that I was on here with the planning board, I said, I would like to be part of that conversation when it takes place. It's never included in any conversations about any ski trails. He, this obviously was not recorded in order to satisfy the town, this was already in motion back in February before this became a, a topic of conversation. And now he's gone ahead and recorded it. So I do say that this does seem like there was something nefarious going on that he could push this through.
We can share with you the techni, the technical memorandums that Ray Corber had shared with South Peak, they were dated August 8th. I received a copy of that today, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're finding all this out in the final hour, but. Um, we can share with you that technical memorandum where in that our town engineer addresses to South Peak. That the way that they had drafted the subdivision was ambiguous and that was not acceptable by the town. And the town would therefore not sign off on the subdivision plans, having it being shown as it is. So, um. I mean, we can, we can share that information with you, just so, you know.
Wouldn't that apply only to the trails that were actually there? I think, I think where I'm getting hung up is that there was no, no trail, no ski trail easement or anything. That was there before, like I pointed out, they just recently decided that's where it was going to be. So, I mean. What easement are you, like, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't make any sense that you can just pull an easement out of thin air. Put it where you want, why not put it in the middle of our property then? Why not put it in the middle of somebody else's property? Like, there's no logic to this and we pointed that out. So if you're recording stuff, it doesn't have to exist on some map. It doesn't exist on any map prior to this one that was recorded without our knowledge.
Yeah, I, I also believe that if the town has made an error, it's up to the town to correct that and not cause us harm in that process.
Oh, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I think going back to, to what Jim said at the beginning, uh, our, our. Goal. At that original meeting when Mark said he was going to take it off was that, that. The town, the planning board did not want to weigh in what was already an ongoing dispute between. You and the declarant. Okay, there was already talk of an easement there. And, and our goal was that we didn't want to weigh in, this, this is a dispute between. You as a lot owner and a, and a declarant and it involves the HOA. Okay? We did not want to insert the planning board or the town of Lincoln into that process by putting our thumb on either side of, of a scale. Okay, I still believe that that's the role of this planning board, you're right, no one. Can just draw up an easement and, and record it, okay? But we as a planning board are not going to say, oh, that's what they did, or, or they have the right to do that because we don't know. Okay, we don't know if they have the right. We have one party who's saying they do, one party who's saying they, they don't. Okay? Okay, we don't know the full history. I have no idea what's in your, your, your uh homeowner's association rules. Nor do I want to know or weigh in or put my thumb on that scale. By doing, by, by, by not signing this, we are not changing the fact that there is a recorded easement, whether it's legal or not legal, ethical, not ethical, uh, historical or brand new. We're not weighing in on that. Okay, by, by not signing this, we, we questioned what, 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 what was done. While we learned what the process was between that meeting and this meeting, where it was a miscommunication between Carol and Ray. But honestly, by signing it, it's, it's our, it's just saying that, that there is that recorded easement and it's going to be reflected on this, this Mylar. Okay, and as far as recording it goes, again, you know, the, the declarant has, has recorded that already, so it's not changing the status of that easement. Okay, the town by signing this is not saying we agree with this easement and they're right and you're wrong. What we're saying is this easement was recorded and we're making sure it shows on ours to match this. When and if this goes to court, it's not, which hopefully is, this can be settled between the parties. As far as where the machine can go and who's responsible for the upkeep of the drainage ditch and all these things could be, should be able to be settled, but if not, and you go to court. Okay, the town's not saying, yes, that belongs there, no, that doesn't belong there. We're saying this is a disputed thing, but it's a recorded easement and we're going to just match that re- recorded and let the courts and the parties settle it out. We want to stay out of this.
I think that, that the option that you have is, and this is a great way to stay out of it, is to say, let's just go back to having a map that doesn't have, reference a ski trail. And then you guys work out your easement between the, because if you go ahead and you approve this plan, now he's going to, of course, not hold on to this land. He's looking to sell these lots. So you're going to have homeowners that are going to go in there and they're going to believe that this is in fact an accurate trail. Because they're going to look at that plan that's just been recorded, that you guys are signing off on. Right? So i- it creates a very difficult situation now and much more to unravel as opposed to if there is no title search that a new homeowner buying that lot has to go through saying, do I know or do I not know if that's a ski trail?
Yeah, I, I, I would argue, I think what Holger's trying to say is by approving it, you are putting your finger on the scale in favor of Mark Pogosian. And I just, I, I'd ask, what, what are you, if you approve it, are you going to make some kind of note notation that we, that you know, that the existence of this is?
Well, that, that will be in a minute that you can hear, so.
Yeah, but I still think that the point still remains that if you approve it, you are actually putting your thumb on the scale in favor of Mark because you now can go forward. We are left with, you know, very few options and, you know, we'll shortly have no cat disrupting our drainage. So I, I.
The, the title searches going forward get a lot more complicated if you approve this. You know, for future owners of lots that Mark Pogosian sells. And becomes a lot more difficult to unravel because now you're going to have disputes with those new homeowners as well. If we now try to unravel this, go back to the original um it plant, or easement that he recorded, if we get that one undone, you're going to have new homeowners that are going to have issues because they're going to say we relied on this because it was on a plan uh
Approved by the town.
Approved by the town that we purchased a lot because we believed that we could trust the town and that this was accurate.
Yeah, I'd all, I just, I'd also like to say that we're here tonight trying to come to a resolution of this to make sure we protect our property rights. And, you know, I think that your initial thought of us speaking before you, you sign off is a good one. And I, I question why um South Peak's attorney is not willing to do that with us tonight. We're here. He's here. I've been asking to speak to Mr. Pogosian's attorney for quite some time now and haven't gotten any headway. Why can't we have that conversation before you make a decision? Because I think this can be resolved very simply. In our case, there's definitely very easy solutions to this problem that we come to tonight. Um, but apparently we seem to be the only ones who want to have that conversation before this is signed. And I think that also is something I would, if I were you, question the motives.
Yeah, I'd say especially where the plans that have been um recorded with the registry of deeds is, has a stark contrast to the ones that were even in the February meeting minutes of the South Peak um HOA Board.
Okay, so, Cal, the only reason we're back here is because of the change in the size of some of the lots.
So, no, we had, you haven't, um.
I haven't signed the Mylar.
Haven't signed the Mylar.
Typically, we don't have second, a second hearing after we approve the subdivision. We don't.
Right.
So I guess why is, why is this back on the agenda?
Begin. Be, because the, because we, at the meeting.
They, they showed up with the trails, the ski trails recorded as an easement.
Right.
After the meeting.
He, I mean.
But at, but at the meeting.
Months and months ago, um, he had, uh, Mr. Noriki had typically made a 91A request and he had, he had continued. Yeah. Previously checked in with me to say, has anything been recorded with the ski easements? Has anything been recorded? And so when this came, I did incent it. Um, because that was the first I knew about it. So that was right before the previous meeting, which is why he showed up to that meeting.
Yeah, but the reason we're having this discussion tonight is because at a previous meeting is part, before we approved the application, as part of that discussion, it was agreed that these would be, be labeled, the labeling of the existing easement as a ski trail would come off of the, of the map. Okay, so.
Right.
We didn't vote on that. That was, that was just a, a, basically part of the presentation, just.
Agree. What happened is we raised our concerns and he said very quickly after we had spoken, we'll just take that off. And we said, okay, and that was what.
Take the labeling of that existing easement.
There was no existing easement.
It was a drainage easement.
Well, drainage easement, but not a ski trail.
Okay, there's an easement, but you're going to take the label of it as a ski trail off. I believe that's what was, was agreed to.
Yeah.
And that satisfied everyone. Then because of this mix-up, and Ray told them to put it back on, and they did. Um, it came to us with, with, with it labeled as a ski trail.
Which is incorrect because it's actually drainage, yep.
Which, as we've been, a fact of the matter is that now matches a recorded easement that, that is existing now. Whether it's legally recorded, whether it's a legal easement, is going to be up to some judge to decide or the mutual parties to figure out. But the fact that that's recorded doesn't change. So now we're, we're, we're faced with this Mylar that's either not going to match what's already at, at Grafton County. Or if we don't allow it, or it is going to allow, either way, the town's not, again, putting their thumb on the scale. We're saying that we recognize that this has been recorded. Okay, and I'd be willing to make the motion that says by doing this, we are not taking a stand on whether that easement legally exists. But we do recognize that it's, it, it exists in a recorded document at the county and just leave it at that. And not, not.
One, one thing that I've learned throughout this process, I've learned a little bit more about recording with the registry than I ever really wanted to know. What if I had gone this morning to the Grafton County Registry of Deeds and recorded easement across Mark's lots on those upper lots? Now, the Mylar that you're about to sign off on doesn't have all the easements because I recorded one this morning. How would that be different?
Because I mean, you can record anything you want at the registry. They don't, they don't weigh in as to whether it's legal.
Exactly. So here's, here's something that the, the other, the other homeowners here, I'm sure didn't get any more notice than I did, that they're about to have a ski trail recorded across their properties.
Right, we didn't, we didn't really notice the butters.
Yeah.
But even so, i- i- you're talking about this one right here. I, I didn't, I was never noticed about this at all. I was told that you didn't need to notify the butters. You just needed to notify, Mark Pogosian needs to notify Mark Pogosian. Essentially what it is, right? Because he needs to notify the association. He notifies himself. He's good. So, but also when he goes and records this easement that he did or recorded these ski trails with Grafton County Registry of Deeds, no one was notified.
It was not, I mean, again, the town was completely out of that, that action. No one was notified by the town because it, town isn't involved in that.
But you, you see my point though, is that i- 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 if I, if I had reported something earlier today on someone else's property, now he's not submitting plans with that. So is my resolution going forward to just go and, if I know that Mark's going before the town, to just start recording easements to myself on that, on that plan and recording easements to someone else?
Different because those Mylars are already signed. This Mylar hasn't signed, so that makes.
No, exactly. But I mean, fu- future Mylars that he hasn't presented yet as he's going to do more and more development. Is that, is that, you know, a way that I can just come into a meeting and say, you know, does it become legitimate if I say there are easements that are not on the plan because I myself went and recorded them?
Ask an attorney, ask your attorney that.
No, but what would the board do? If, if I came in and said, hey, there are easements and I show you the easement and it's been recorded, right, and it's not on the plan that you were about to sign off on? How would you action that?
We, we'd say we couldn't weigh in on it, just, just like we're doing here.
But here, but it, it's a very similar situation, right? Because here is an easement that we did not grant, that someone else put on our property, and now you're about to sign something based on that easement. So the situation's very similar. Is that if I, without authority, and like you said, you're not attorneys, you're not going to verify whether it's legitimate or not. So what would prevent me from going in and putting an easement on a property in the future that I'm not supposed to do, that someone would need to sue me to have undo? Right, where I grant myself access to someone else's property as they're that evening submitting a Mylar for you to sign? It's a very similar situation.
Well, actually, it's worse because we've been objecting to this from the beginning, like from the beginning that we knew about this. We've been here making it clear, showing you the plans that there were no trails there, showing you the drainage easement, which is not a ski trail easement. And you've had notice of this all along. So the fact that somebody went behind our backs to do this and record it, even though we had already lodged our, our, our objections, makes it even worse because you're, you know now our, what our objections are and you're still going to approve it. Like that, if we didn't know, it would be one thing. And I think that's really where the difference is here, is that you've had, we've all had notice, including Mark Pogosian, about the issues with our, our, our lot line. So it's not just that you're not weighing in. We're saying, we've said months ago, there was an issue. He represented, he wasn't going to put it on there. Then he did. We're telling you, we never knew about any of it, including the recording. And, and, well, you all decided to like add it back in and we didn't get notice of that either. Um, so there was no hearing between that happening and tonight. We didn't have, before he recorded, you didn't tell us, oh, by the way, we're actually going to record an easement there. We've had, so I think the notice aspect of this is what makes it different.
Okay, I mean, the only reason, the only, so the reason this is back on the agenda is because he made some changes to some of the lots, same with Timber Lane subdivision. That, that, they call that one out, Carol?
You're, you're thinking about the modification, that, that's the.
Right, but that's why it's back on the agenda.
The 28 lot that was all part of the Upper Crooked Mountain Road. This is part.
I understand that, but the pre- the sub- subdivision we talked about two weeks ago that was here because he made some de minimis changes.
Right.
It only made it back on the agenda because he made it some my, my new changes to lots, right?
Not to the nest, Jim. That was to the previous six lot subdivision or eight lot subdivision that you approved last fall. The only reason this is in front of you today is because you didn't sign it last week or at the last meeting because there was question about the ski trails. Traditionally, it doesn't come before the board again. It doesn't get put back on the agenda. There was no changes to this other than the representation of the ski trails. The lots are the same.
Okay.
Which was done without our knowledge. I mean, we weren't contacted by the town or anyone else when Ray Corber had a discussion with, with South Peak or whoever to, to add that in. We were not notified of that. Even though we had already let lodged our objections at the last meeting as, as, you know.
Right, we, we weren't either.
Right, no, no, I understand, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I, I think we have some questions on this in terms of where did we go wrong? What should we have done differently so we would have received more information? You know, I, I've emailed on a regular basis. We've attended the meetings. Um, where is it, but we're still not receiving all the notice that we should be given that we could have averted this?
Right, because if we'd known that he was going to record trails, we could have had a chance to be heard then before you, now you're basically saying, well, it's already done, so it's too late. But, but it wasn't done be- before we lodged our objections to the town. Do you see what I'm saying? That our objections preceded his recording. So to say to us tonight, well, you know, it just got recorded. It's up to you to decide it's legal or not. We'd actually made those objections before it was recorded. And we weren't notified that it was going to be recorded. So I think those are our problems for the argument that you don't get to weigh in on the legality of it. Because we, we didn't have a chance to, to have a hearing at that point in time.
Carol, do you know what, what plan he recorded? Was it a, was it anything that came out of this board?
No, it's, it's this thing right here.
Okay, but that. But, but. Okay, but thi- this, this isn't anything that, that came out of the planning board.
No.
Okay, so, so that, that, that's, this is important.
Yeah.
I mean, when you say you got no notice.
Yeah.
We got no notes. Okay, this is, this is not something that was signed by the planning board and then got recorded.
I understand.
Okay, so, so.
They did August 20.
Going back to your thing, what if you recorded things at the, at the, at the registry this morning?
Right.
Okay. Would, would someone have the right to stand here and say that the planning board didn't notify them about you recording those easements?
No.
Okay, well, that's, that's the same answer for this. We did not know this is getting recorded.
There, there were two things that I was saying there. One, one is, one is that, one is that Mr. Pogosian did not notify us that this was going on.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's also notifications from the planning board about conversations with Mr. Corber, where he was, you know, and I, I've been emailing, trying to get more and more information about, um, you know, anything, please keep me informed on anything that's submitted, anything that's new. And that's, you know, a statutory requirement that I have to get that. I've not gotten all the information in terms of what's been submitted despite my requests. So the planning board most certainly has exposure on this and you're.
No, you're, you're not understanding the procedure here.
But, but I think that this is also something that I urge the planning board not to look at as a one-shot deal and you make a decision and applies to this and this only. In terms of looking at future homeowners, future developers, future scenarios about how much weight do you put and do you, if something is questioned, how do you handle that? Because, you know, the two examples that we have here is the one that has happened, which is that the developer goes and records something that has potential to be erroneous and you can get deeper and deeper and deeper if you approve this development. Future buyers of those lots, you know, if this goes to court, it's going to be tight. It's not going to get resolved next week. It could be years before that goes to court. In the meantime, you have people that are buying those lots that are doing that based on, you know, their belief that everything was done legitimately. Right? You have the second scenario, which is that you can have a lot owner that says, I don't like what the developer is about to do. So I'm just going to go and record an easement to sabotage him. And then come into a town meeting like this and say, no, that Mylar's not correct. There's an easement that's not recorded on there. I recorded it this morning. Right? So there's a potential here for a lot of future um mischievous things taking place that I urge you to consider not. Mischievous things taking place that I urge you to consider not just for what the current scenario is, but the future. And what is the board's position on that? How do you intend to resolve those issues?
And again, I think just to your point, like as far as you were saying, well, Ray Corber said just record the easement. Well, if so, then they should have been recorded properly. This is new. This is new since the last meeting because. We, because when we were here last, there were plans that showed a drainage easement, now it's a ski trail. So if Ray said to them, record, make sure you identify the easements, well, in this case, then what happened is they misidentified. The easement. Because this was not a ski trail on any map prior to this. So you're. I get that you're, what you said is that, well, well, the town had to have more specificity, that makes sense. But this, this is like, you're actually changing the nature of what was, what it it was before. So you're not, you're not making it more specific, you're actually changing it to a trail that what has not existed on any plan prior to this. I mean, if you want to argue the rest of the trail, yeah, we've skied down down them, I mean, they all are there, but if you go to our property, there's never been a trail there. There, there, there's, there's no, they did not build a trail there. It was something that the neighbors used. As a convenience to get to the trail, but there was never a trail there. There's a drainage swell that you can clearly see. So. I mean, if you're asking, if your argument is, well, we just asked him to be more specific. Well, then what would have been more specific is that they identified that as a drainage easement, which we already pointed out at the last meeting. So it wasn't like in, in, wasn't unclear. What it was. But instead, he changed the nature of it and turned it into something that it wasn't. So I don't know, I mean, as far as the argument about, well, we just asked him to be more specific or to identify it, that's, that doesn't really apply here because. This wasn't a trail before. Ever. On any map prior to this.
I think the applicant's attorney would like to offer a few words.
So I would like to offer a solution. Um, sitting here tonight, we, just as in June, do not care whether the easements are shown on this plan or not. But we believe we have the right to record the easement. The trail is existing and has been existing and was existing. When the Norrequis bought their lot. And all we are doing is putting on a record something that we believe exists and something we believe. Mr. Begosian has a right to do. Leaving all that aside. We do not care if it's on this plan or not. The only reason it was on the plan is because Ray Corber required it. If you, the board. Are okay with the. Trail easement being removed from the plan. I will ask Mr. Begosian and his engineer. To remove the easement from the plan. As. In any way, shape or form, it just be removed completely. My understanding is, the only reason it was done that way is because Ray believed it was required by town regulation. So it's up to you guys. I'm not here and Mr. Begosian is not here pushing this issue, saying it's gotta be on this plan, it's urgent. It it's not, for us, it doesn't matter, one way or the other. So it's up to you guys, if you are okay. Removing it from the plan and you tell us that that is, you would approve it with it removed. We're okay with that and we would submit a new plan, new MyLars without it being indicated. It's up to you. I don't know if that's helpful, but I'd love to hear your thought.
That's what your request is, is that correct?
It is like, I do, I do have a request for a turn.
We'll give him another microphone. Hold on, hold on.
Would you be willing to also update? The, uh. Ski trails that you have recorded with the registry. To mimic what the original plans were for ski trails. So that they actually match that and not what was actually recorded. And I, we can, I can take those back, the, uh. Meeting minutes from back in February and we can compare them to what was actually recorded and I can show you the variance. Would you be willing to re-record it? That the ski trails are there based on the original design and not some new design that is recently. Been fabricated.
I can't say yes and I can't say no because I don't know of the variants. What I can say is we asked the engineers. To provide us a plan that showed the as-built ski trail areas as of whenever it was, August or whatever. And that's what they told us they did. I can also tell you, it is our position. That Mr. Begosian, under the declaration. Has the right to locate ski trails. Anywhere in the development he wishes, including over units. Which is how your land is defined in the declaration. And that he can not only put them there, he can move them and he can relocate them. Under our interpretation of the declaration, so long as he does not go through a structure, a residential unit. He could tomorrow move the ski trail on your property and i- if he wished to do so. I'm not saying he does, but we believe the declaration allows him to do that. We believe you are on notice of the declaration in both your deed. And in the public offering statement, the New Hampshire Attorney General required us to provide you and all buyers. And that. There is no reason he must provide notice to anyone to do that. When you bought into the development, you bought into this arrangement. I understand that you may be concerned. But I have to say, this trail in particular is within ten feet of the property line. There's a fifteen-foot setback. You cannot build a structure within the fifteen foot. Of this property line, and this is in no way going to impair your use of the lot with respect to building a home on it if you wish to do so. Now, having said all of that, all I can tell you is. The engineers did what we asked, so far as I know. Told, put on a plan where the trails are. And Mark is declaring them as easement areas, as we believe he is entitled to do. We understand you disagree with that and that's okay. But for purposes of this planning board. They shouldn't be brought into it and they shouldn't care.
I do think that.
I disagree.
But that, that's.
I I disagree with that representation that Mr. Begosian said there wasn't an easement on your property. He agreed he wouldn't show one on that plan. And I'm still fine with that, as I've told the board. So again, we're just doing it because that's what the engineer told us to do, we're not trying to.
Wait, 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 wait.
Just on this one subdivision, let's not, let's try and stay on topic here.
Yeah. No, no, wait a minute.
I wish you would let me have a moment and I presented something to the board and it's on the table. Again, you've had your moment.
Let him finish what he has to say, okay?
Thank you. So I I've posed a question to the board as a, provided a solution which I think addresses their concern. As they've said tonight, their concern is it got put back on the plan. I'm saying, as we agreed in June, we're willing to take it off. It's up to you guys, you're the one approving the plan. And we're willing to do that if that's what you request.
Wait, is, that's what, what, what? You had already agreed to prior to this meeting, so. Okay, but, but it sounds like you're having a discussion there because what you're talking about doesn't have anything to do with planning board. That's my objection. That.
Anderson, go ahead.
If it's an ease, a drainage easement, like I had pointed out a couple of minutes ago. It was misidentified later after the fact. We, we, we came here and showed it as a drainage easement, we showed you the maps, everything. So I don't. Our issue is just that it shows it as it, it as it is, because I think that the dispute is that. I'm, well, I'm not sure what you're saying. It sounds like you're saying two things, you're saying. That there was a trail there, but that he can also create a trail. So I'm not sure whether the story is that he created a trail recently or that there was a trail. Because I don't think it can be both.
Well, I think what we need to clarify is what's on the ground versus what's a recorded easement. And what I'm saying is, this has been on the ground. And we can therefore record an easement. Over what has been on the ground, that's what I'm saying. It's built, it's there. It was there when you bought your property. The trail area.
It's not, no.
I I've been told otherwise, so.
That, that's, I just have to correct that because we, they took trees down to actually create a trail. And it's actually not on the property line. It's actually right now far off of our duty line. So, and there's a swell there that that has drainage pipes, so there is no ski trail built there. I I'm just trying to say that's not existent. Auto.
Okay, but I can't answer that, I haven't been there, all I've been told is the engineers put on the plan where it exists.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, again.
Yeah.
We're not trying to, to characterize any other trail besides the one.
I know, I understand that, yeah.
So if you want to call it all ski trails and call our issue as the side there, the drainage easement, we're fine with that, too. I'm just throwing it out there. I don't, we're not trying to say there are no trails. We're not, we're not commenting on any other trails other than what is on the side of our property or not, as the case may be.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
We didn't open it, so we're just.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so. This. I'm just kind of clarifying here, this is, this is your property. Here. Come on up. This is your property.
Correct.
This is what, is this what you don't want as ski trail or is it this here?
Any, anything on our property at all is what we're agreeing to.
Okay. So here. Here, that's a drainage easement and not a ski trail.
I, I can just leave it all whole together, I don't think you need to hold anything.
Okay. So you. This'll come off and this'll, and this'll come off.
And anything that's within our property. Comes off. You have a copy of the actual plan. It's, what I would suggest is that all the same trail be removed. That's what it's. Because it, it's not this, this is not the plan for time. It's the original, the generic plans that you were asking about this.
Okay, well, this.
This is not our lot lines.
So it's trail, dated August twentieth.
And there's this ski trail crossing.
This, this is what we were talking about. Right there, that dark, not this, okay. This dark area. It's right there, that dark area shown on this.
So, so. This one, but he said it's always been there. But here's the thing, here, here, this one here. Right, this is from February, right? Here you have saying that you have this ski slope coming down here, it's all not here. We go in here, we went lower.
There's three towns, they talk of series.
Better here.
We're just, okay. Looking, looking at one is not all that bad, well, I'm, same thing. I don't know. Okay, so he, his. Isn't the easement we're talking about?
Exactly.
All together. But that's what we agree on.
Well, we have the mix of miscommunication, that's how I can come back line.
I don't think. Well, it's not what I would. I thought we eliminated. This from being labeled as a ski trail, still an easement, it was a drainage easement, but leaving all of this the way it was.
Was submitted, second time around.
Okay.
And these still exist.
On either side?
And, and Ray said, look, it's a trail to lower that video.
So you want to, you want to get rid of the whole thing?
Yeah, I thought, to me, it's, it's something you go, you care, you know. I mean, for party purposes, we've already submitted a claim, we know what we're talking about, whether it's on this plan or not.
I mean, it's materially affects something. What? Whether this shows or not, the drainage is the same, the oxides.
It, it keeps us out of the homeowners.
No, right, that's the whole thing.
Rules. All right. And let's regroup. Thank you for this.
All right. Okay, so. The applicant has agreed, we're gonna give a waiver. And they're gonna remove the ski trail on the subdivision, from the subdivision plan. Pending a waiver from the board.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that the board waives the requirement to include. These. The easements on that, on this subdivision plan. Um. And. And the drainage easement. At least that one drainage easement.
So. For the ski trail easement and the drainage easement on the yellow birch circle and shone.
Okay.
Hey.
That's my, that'll be my, my motion.
Any further, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions, any further discussion?
The, the drainage is like really important, it's gonna be there, it's just not gonna be shown, right?
Right.
But it is there.
It is still there.
Okay. All right, then I, I agree.
Okay, and, and, and just to note in the minutes that by doing this, we're not. Weighing in on whether those. The, the, the proper easements for those ski trails do exist or don't exist. We're just saying, we're not gonna include them on this plan.
That's a private matter.
It's a private matter between the homeowners. The individual homeowners and the homeowners association and the declaration.
All right, Steve seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, all right, the motion carries, all right. All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you all.
Two minutes.
We need a five-minute break.
Jim, I don't think you need me anymore, do you?
I said, thanks for your participation.
Oh, no worries, no worries, I will touch base with you later on.
All right, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
You as well.
So we told you he gets back, we'll get started. Uh, next up is Justin Walsh, I can see him here. Justin, are you online somewhere? Has he put, Carol, has Justin provided any information? Are you gonna speak for him? Okay, then. Let's move on. Peter Marlowe.
Carol.
Your, your mic isn't on at all.
Take one and give out one to everybody.
Sure, yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we see what Lou is?
Thank you. It's different.
I didn't think I'd get up this, uh, this fast. So I have everything in order that I'm going to go in. I didn't purposely, purposely didn't staple it. So that I could go through. Um, we all know that housing is really difficult throughout New Hampshire. Um, especially hard here in Lincoln. Um, as I said last year, I rented a trailer. On La Brec Street at the end of the street and I had eighty-five people within one hour. You know, just trying to get anywhere to live. Uh, people now. Um. People now will take a one bedroom unit and somebody will sleep on a couch in the living room. So it's, it's out of control, even when I talked to Karina and I talked to, um. Jane, we've got people living in hotel rooms, families living in hotel rooms. And to me personally, I just find that unacceptable. Um, I've been doing apartments all my life. Um, it's something I enjoy doing. Um, but, uh. This, these will be just my notes, the first page that I'll go through. Developers cannot build apartments today without some type of incentives. The numbers just don't work anymore. The cost of materials, regulations on construction, new energy codes, fees, interest rates makes it impossible. Housing is referred by many terms, affordable. Then they changed it to workforce because they didn't like the word affordable. The new term now is attainable housing. Which refers to both rental and homeownership. New Hampshire does not get HUD funding like other states get. But they are now working with tax credits that are applied to the cost of the project. These tax credits are sold at a discount rate to bring down the cost of construction. Designs need to be creative today and fit with the environment to help keep the cost in line. Much like the hotels have all developed. Apartment buildings are now being constructed with low slope roofs. People ask why? This eliminates the cost for expensive sprinkler systems in the attic areas. These are extremely expensive due to the fact they need special treatment for freezing. Panelization is another method to speed up construction. Time and also helps with weather problems. This also keeps the cost of financing much lower as the projects can be, can be completed in a more timely manner. Um, these are notes that I'm going to mention the two thousand twenty-three New Hampshire statewide housing needs assessment. Published by the New Hampshire Housing and prepared by the Root Policy Research on behalf. I've attended or my staff have attended every single meeting. Throughout New England, we go constantly and we always attend the New Hampshire ones. This study. Revealed the following. Based on the population growth and to stabilize the market, New Hampshire needs sixty thousand units. Between, between twenty twenty and twenty thirty and nearly ninety thousand units between twenty twenty and twenty forty. That's in the report. And those numbers are all on this sheet that I, I left with you, just so everybody can see that I'm not making up these numbers. Home sale prices increased in this Grafton County between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand twenty-two are up sixty-seven percent. On page seven of the report, it states that, uh, the state has little capacity to accommodate projected population. And employment growth without the increase of housing production. Page seven also states that eighty, eighty-eight thousand four hundred new housing units that will be needed. Thirty thousand should be rental units. So those are numbers right from the state. There's another meeting in October I intend to, uh. Go to. And again, this is just. I just want information from everybody. Uh, benefits to the town of Lincoln. What are the benefits? Housing is very much needed in the Lincoln to supply the workforce. Constantly, all I hear is, I'd go to work there, but there's nowhere to live and I can't travel that far. Residents should not need to live full time in a hotel unit. These type of projects add a tax base to the town. As of right now, and this may change and Karina knows this, as of right now, the town would receive ten thousand dollars per unit. For every permitted apartment. That is affordable. They would get ten thousand dollars a unit. So if. If somebody had twenty units times ten thousand. That goes directly to the town, not to anyone. It's, it's money.
From where?
From the, from the state. It's an incentive for the town to, to put in a housing. And right now it's ten. Yes. Yes. And right now it's ten thousand. Karina thinks it's going to change. But depending on funding, everything depends on funding. Okay?
That's that Invest NH. Um, program. You have that noted at the bottom here.
Yes.
But, um, okay, when we had. I forget the state guy. I'm pointing.
Andrew Dorsett.
Thank you. Andrew Dorsett was here talking about that Invest NH program.
So the, and there's other, there's other, a lot of incentives. The biggest thing. For somebody like me, a developer, would be the tax incentives. And we're hoping to get a combined state and federal. To get tax incentives to offset it. There's no way I can build. Uh, an eighteen unit apartment building and even break even.
May I ask, what, what do you think the cost per unit is going to be? If you didn't get any incentives?
Well, the, our, our costs are running three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. We try to beat that all the time. We're sort of blue collar because I, I mean, I'm, I'm still out there myself. So we try to do it, but cost of running, um. Three hundred and fifty thou, three, three hundred, uh, three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. Now, down in Rhode Island. In, in Boston. Their apartment. Their cost per door, they call it per door. Without land. Is seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars per door. That's in, uh, Boston, Beacon Hill. Not Beacon Hill, uh, just off from there. They're putting a big, big project in. In Rhode Island. They thought that it was great because their cost was. Six hundred and fifty-four dollars. Six thousand. Six thousand fifty-four, six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars per door. I mean, I, we don't come anywhere close to that. But again, we do a lot of. A lot of the things ourselves and we try to do things right. We panelize and things like that. But. And again, I, I want to. I want to emphasize this. These are small units. But they're not as small as a hotel room. Okay? This typical one bedroom unit that I'm showing right there. I, I did these small plans so that everybody really understood it. This typical one bedroom unit is four hundred square feet. And people go, how can you do that? If you notice on each side of the bed. It's a king sized bed. We put, we put cabinets in there. We don't build closets with doors. It saves on square footage. Those cabinets automatically have drawers built into them, so people don't have to bring in dresses. You know, people little coming up here to work. They, they don't have the money to buy furniture. So you, you supply armoires with built in drawers, the same as when you come into the unit. Karina, when I brought this over, she asked me, are these kitchenettes? No, these are full kitchens. They have a dishwasher. They have a thirty inch stove. They have cabinets and there's plenty of room for a, uh, a table for four. Living room. And even Bill Marriott, as Bill Marriott developed hotels over the years. The thing that they found is we're not using those big, deep. Televisions anymore. They were able to make the room smaller by using a flat screen TV. Now you go and you go to buy a flat screen TV, geez, they're only about an inch thick. So that helps everything that you're doing. The. The industry, tiny homes is huge all over the country. Um, my, my accountant just came back from San Diego. They had a five thousand square foot lot. In San Diego for sale for one million dollars. And it was approved for three tiny homes, five thousand square feet. So they're building things that are like six hundred square feet, but people are happy to own something. The next one that I have here, it's a two bedroom unit for somebody that is. Uh, he's got a child or maybe a, an elderly, uh, parent, something like that. It is a two bedroom. It's a full bath. It's got a full kitchen. The only difference is. A king might fit, but I have it designed with a queen and then the other full size. Obviously, you could take twenty, bunk beds if you had to. In the smaller bedroom, but everything has built in. Yep.
What are these red circles we're seeing?
Lights.
Okay.
Yeah. They didn't all show, they didn't all print the right way, but there are lights on the ceiling. Again, the lights, they're all LED and they're only a half inch thick. We're not using anything hanging down. And it's just, it's just the way the industry is going. Um, if you go to, uh, the, the old Rockingham Race Track, they built a beautiful hotel down there, the Tuscan. And it's, it's stunning. It's the smallest hotel room you've ever seen, but it's the most elaborate hotel you've ever seen. And the lights on the ceiling are square and they're this big. But they're all LED, so it's pretty fascinating. So I have two, just to show you tonight, just to give you an idea. Um, this first one. This first lot. The first building is an eighteen unit building. And it, it sits. At basically, it's called, it's zero, zero. Uh, Daniel Webster Highway, but it's. Uh, two forty-seven is the house next door. And I bought it from there. It was, I bought it from Cresta. So that's an acre and a half piece of land. Okay? The rendering. The rendering shows you this type of building. I'm, I would, I would bring before the board. It's, it's a little blocky, but we break it up with roofs. We break it up with vertical siding, horizontal siding. And we decorate, we landscape to the tilt, we make it look good. If you go to the next page. This is not a, a civil engineered plan. This is me putting down on my software program. There's, there's eighteen. There's eighteen units and there's thirty-six parking spaces along with a dumpster, uh, in the back right corner. The wetlands have been delineated. Uh, Steve Tower came out. He brought someone in. They marked it all, so I actually have it on the plan. And then there's even another piece of land that's high in the back that could be used for open space. It would probably require a bridge, you know, to go over the wetlands. The next page, which is three of six, that plan shows six units on each floor. The building is three stories. It's slab construction on the first floor. And. There's. Three two bedrooms on each floor and three one bedrooms on each floor. New Hampshire, the housing, they want fifty fifty. They want fifty, at least fifty percent two bedroom units. They want. The rest can be mixed, studios, whatever. That's going to change. They're willing, they're going to, you're going to start to see just twenty percent two bedroom. Because they're so desperate to get anything. Ag- again, when you look around in hotels. All the way down to the Nashville border are filled with families. Even the Sheraton Tower, the old Sheraton Tower, beautiful hotel. They've got families living in there. So it's, it's an issue. So this, this needs to be done. Nobody, no developer wants to do this. Because they can't make any money out of it. But if you can work with what the government, the state and what the feds give you. You can make it work.
Um, Peter, in the hallway, you can request, in the hallway, there, there, is those water heaters?
Those are water heaters in the hallway.
Okay, and is there, is there laundry facilities on site?
Is there what?
Laundry?
Uh, there will be on this one. I didn't, it is on the next plan. I don't have it. But I will, do you see that, that entry right there? There's a, I didn't draw it in. When you go in the entry on the right.
Yeah.
There's a closet right there.
Yeah.
That could be laundry. Yep. Um, the first. Uh, four, six. And five basically mimic, mimic each other. There's no difference there. The very last page just shows the elevations all the way around. And. Yep, so that's the plot plan. So that's that whole. That whole lot and that whole design there.
I think he's going to be like what we call restricted multifamilies. Basically.
Well. I don't think he heard you. He's talking.
So these are basically coordinate ordinance. He's going to be restricted multifamilies.
Yes. Yeah.
So you're not really. As far as I can see, you're not going to need any waivers or variances.
No. No. No, this is, and she should, Renee is just passing out the second lot that I'll go through afterwards, so you have it. But I have the Grafton County. I have the, um. The HUD required. Um. Payment schedule here in my hand. Uh, for multifamily tax subsidized projects. It's sixty percent rent. Um. The rent for a one bedroom, they have is twelve hundred and eighteen dollars. The, the rent for a two bedroom. Under these programs. Is fourteen hundred and sixty-one, and that's as of right now. And I know there's people paying more money. In this town just to live anywhere. The problem is. People are spending thirty to fifty percent of their income. For rentals now.
Yeah.
And that's, that's become the problem. So somebody has to address it. Um. Everybody's been talking about this for five years. But it's only now it seems to be happening because there's so much pressure. I mean, you know, I felt bad. I think we had a, uh, they used to tell me there was a girl living in a car at McDonald's. Yeah, you know.
Bridge.
Just, that's a tough situation. I, I don't know why it, everything has gotten so bad. Um. I, one thing that really has hurt, and I know energy is an important thing. But boy, I'll tell you, the energy codes have really. Uh, driven up the cost for insulation, insulation. We use a lot of two inch styrofoam on jobs. And, uh, two years ago. Uh, I helped a guy do a house in Camden for him, the guy that works for me. We paid twenty-seven dollars a sheet. For two inch styrofoam. It's now sixty. Yeah, four by eight, sixty-two dollars at Home Depot. If you buy more than twenty, I think they drop it down to fifty-eight. Uh, but that's, that's expensive. You think a sheet of foam is more expensive than a sheet of plywood? It doesn't make any sense. You know? Do you want me to go on to the next one so you can look at both plans? Because they sort of, they sort of work together. We would, we would have to put these. We would have to develop this and put it into HUD. As a combined, because they don't like to do small projects. They like to have it. You know? They have a limit on what they'll do. Um, we've been in touch. There's some really good people with the state and then there's some stuff, stuff that are just okay. Um, but this is another lot. It's across from basically just before the Indian Head. You probably see me. I've been trying to fill up the front and bring in material in. I have an arrow there. So that's a, a one third of an acre lot. The plan, the footprint is identical. Okay, there's no, it's, it sets all the side yard requirements. It's off the road. Everything fits. Um, the only, the only thing I don't have here is there's ten units. And unless the civil engineer, once they get in there, I could only get nineteen parking spaces in, so I'm short one. Uh, parking space, but I do have a garage. Underneath, a maintenance garage. So if they counted that as one. Um, then that would, that would change everything. They're both. Nice looking. They fit. The colors fit with it. Um, again, they're slope roofs. Um, this building basically is, if you, if you count it from the backside of it, it's a four story building. But the people that lived on the top floor, they would have the parking in the front. Everybody else would be parking in the rear. And again, these are just. Proposals, they're just. Ideas. We're all with, we go back and forth. Um. If you go to the first level. first level, second level, third level are all the same. It's the same plan that I just showed you, one-bedroom, two-bedroom and one-bedroom units. This building has more two-bedroom units than it does one, this only has three one-bedroom units. If you go to the last page, we have an entry from the rear and we were able to put another two-bedroom unit on the right side facing into the, the forest basically that's in there and then a storage and maintenance, um, garage underneath. So that would be on the lower level. Again, the, has to be done through tax credits. It has to be done through fast construction and hopefully the rates keep coming down a little bit.
Anyone have any questions?
This is great, this is just what we're looking for.
Yep.
Perfect. Each unit's like the size of a garage.
Yep.
Think about it.
You know, I, I could have tried, sometimes you try to sneak more units in, but I figure it's easier for me to put a tractor over there with a snow blower on it, we live in Lincoln, New Hampshire. And it's just easier to send somebody over and take care of everything. Yeah, and the only thing this doesn't have is open space, but it's surrounded by forest. You know, there's, there's a, uh, it's just a beautiful area.
No, I would echo what Steve just said, this, this is exactly what we're looking for.
This is like a present.
Um, a, a couple of maybe questions? On your, on the second, the second,
Building.
Building. You're showing a, um, a proposed shared driveway easement across the, the, your boundary
Yes.
line with the others. Um, parcel, existing parcel number two.
Yep.
It ended up that there's a shared driveway easement between lot, what show on here is lot two and lot three.
Yes.
And it, and obviously you, you, you see that when you pull into,
Yep.
There's a shared driveway and then, um, you know, Jake's garage goes one way and Gina's house goes the other way. Um, I don't know if that, that easement over on your side is actually recorded, um, but,
It's been changed.
It has been changed.
It's been changed by the engineer, by the DOT. They eliminate, Steve, for some reason Steve Tower said he couldn't take it out right away.
Okay.
But they have changed it, so it's just a driveway for me on my property.
So long as you know that.
Yeah, they eliminated, they eliminated the left part of that and they actually changed the wording so that Jake and her say, uh, share that driveway down the end.
Correct.
But that one's been eliminated and I'm the only, uh, what do they call it, the driveway permitted. I'm the only driveway permitted to come in at that point now.
Yep, okay.
I think the fellow's guy is, uh, DOT is McMahon, the engineer is McMahon, they changed it.
Yep, okay, as long as you knew that.
I did.
Um, and then the, the second thing, just to point out is that that, that you, it's good that you're showing the approximate edge of the pavement of Route Three.
Yep.
And then you're showing the actual boundary line.
Yep.
And, and you can see that, that between Route Three and your property
Huge.
Is, is, yeah.
It's gotta be twenty, thirty feet.
It's almost as wide as Route Three.
It is, yeah.
So, so when you go back and look at your, your parking
I did not put that in, yeah.
No, but I'm saying there's, there's plenty of room like for snow removal.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
If you push snow onto that, that right away, you won't be the only one.
I actually drew it to scale, that's the Route Three. And you can see that blank area, it's as wide, it's as wide as the, um, the highway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cause Jake, Jake has stuff parked on there all the time. I think it's just in case they ever wanna widen the road, I don't know.
Yeah, that was It, it goes like that all the way up.
Yeah.
All the way up.
Yeah.
Yeah, um,
In fact, they, they won't let me bring the sewer and water up there. They want me, I have to tunnel under the highway. They wanted a, a horizontal boring, I have to go across for the sewer and the water, which actually works out better.
Okay.
Because the water on that side of the street is high pressure.
It is a different pressure zone.
Nate told me the pressure on this side is really, really low. Yeah, so that would work better for spring, we have to put sprinklers in these buildings anyways. You know, I just wanted to come in front just to see how people feel. Um, I mean, this plan could be copied all over the town. This plan could be copied on the new land you guys just bought, the town bought for apartments. I have some other unbelievable plans for homeownership that are very simple for a developer to build. Um, that could have a basement or not have a basement, you could have different versions. But, uh, I try to, I'm, I'm a real conservative, I try to build very conservative, you know? Try to build off the shelf, you know?
Anyone have any other questions? Right.
It's the latest I've ever been here.
It's not the latest we've ever been here.
Okay, so moving on, we have, we see that you posed a resolution on Franklin Street.
Yes, I sent pictures and everything over. Um, I ended up going a little further than Ray Corba suggested, I put a dry well in. I put an underground trench drain and I put plenty of berms in, uh, so there should be no water coming onto, uh, Franklin Street. Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, I, I, my, I, I broke, I broke the head of my excavator. It's an old one, I broke the head of my excavator when I was digging it, I was almost done. So I had to call Jake and Jake came up with his and he finished the hole for me.
That looks, that's pretty good. That looks great.
Any questions on Franklin? Alright, thank you, Peter.
So is this something the town might?
I think we, you know, I don't see any reason why it doesn't meet our zoning limits.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, I mean, you, you've covered parking setbacks.
Yeah, so he just, he just has to come in for a site plan with you.
Site plan review.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you still have to do that.
Oh yeah, no, I understand that, but I can go further and I could, I'll go get a civil engineer and have them design a plan.
Get it or done.
Steve says we welcome it.
Oh, it's very exciting.
Okay.
Very happy.
Huh?
You'll make Jane very happy.
Yes.
Um, it's hard to find. Let's see, Garden Forest Ridge.
Uh, yeah, sure.
I had my assistant with me tonight, so.
She did a good job.
Now I have to take it to eat somewhere, they're open.
He deserves it.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, Peter. They still up there talking about easements?
I don't know.
This one was a lot more fun than the last one. Yes, it was.
Alright, what, what, what'd you say was next, is the Forest Ridge?
Yeah, did everyone get a copy of this?
Yeah.
From Ponnell, Michaels and McKay.
Yeah, I think it's still on my phone, I don't think I printed it, did you get a printed copy? I did too, yep.
No, I have one, I just have to find it.
First ridge.
You know, the beginning of the letter um, implies, although it doesn't directly state that the Forest Ridge Property Owners Association, you know, the master association believes that the, there is, um, excess whatever, um, space room in, in, in the existing, um, trash location. Um, before we even get into you know, the, the details of this argument, is there a reason, or just to say, should, does the board wanna relook at the twenty-eleven approval? What, 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 um, prompted that restriction? And do we want to change and or eliminate that restriction on the number of units that it can serve? Um, obviously we can't mandate, I mean, if the homeowner is, so if the master association says, well, we know that there's excess, um, capacity, but we don't wanna do it, we can't, I don't know if we can make them.
Right, cause we should have, we should have, Rick was so distracting with his, you know, pond and tension pond, retention pond, it just totally fell off the off our radar, right, the transfer station.
I don't know, he put two, three cars in his, it wasn't like left, so people go throwing their stuff away. I thought there were issues with your butters too.
Well, it was the bear, it was Paul's mother and maybe his other relatives.
I, I think it was, um, I mean, I don't know if it was issues or the anticipation of issues with the butters. But if, if he's accurate in his description of, um, the operation, it sounds like they have the existing operation well under control.
I mean, have we received any complaints about trash over there?
Only from Paul. Um, he said that some bear had taken trash and spread it around in his, I don't know if it's his brother's house and his mother's house or something.
I did talk about, said the bear was just a one-off event.
That's, that's from people not putting it in the bin.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what he said.
Yeah.
Um, and that can be, if you have one person using it, the facility, or, or two hundred, all it takes is that one.
It doesn't matter how many dumpsters you have, it still happens.
Well, that's it, if you put in a second location, it's just
If someone's careless, it's gonna happen.
Alright. I mean, I'm wondering as a first step, do we want to, before we even discuss whether we wanna change the, um, twenty-eleven approval, do we wanna ask the, the master association if their preference is to have a single trash recycling facility at the existing location and allow more units to, to use it? And if they say no, then there's no sense of us discussing that as an option. But if they say yes, we could then say, um, is that the route we wanna go? That'd be my suggestion.
They're happy with everyone using that one recycling center. See why we need to reinvent the wheel.
Right, we would have to, um,
Have a hearing.
A, a public hearing, notify your butters, uh, that we're changing the, um, basically it's a change in the site plan. Although nothing physical is changing, it's other than the restriction that we what, while we, the former planning board put on that, that, um, recycling trash capacity.
Right, so we'd have to release the pines, the pines is the one responsible for that second.
Right.
We have to.
It sounds like they're maybe on the verge of being approved as a junior association or something.
And, and maybe the discussion with the homeowners, the master association is number one, would they object if the pines used it, number two, would they want the future um, junior associations that come about to also use that? Um, even if it included expansion, you could make that the condition of approval. So when the next, when the next junior association gets proposed, um, if, if
I don't, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we have to go that far, I mean, I think we're just working out with the pines now. You know, see how it goes.
So, that's true, take it step at a time.
Right.
So would you invite like, um, Mr. Schofield and David Larson and whoever the heads of those associations are, or just David Larson and, I mean, Harold Schofield?
I, I wonder, is, is the first step just a conversation between you and who's ever the president of that master association, just saying that, that board doesn't even wanna bring this up if the answer is no. If the answer is yes, we would have to go through the butter notification and public hearing process. Um, but we don't wanna do that if your answer is no, it's a waste of everybody's time.
So I would start with David Larson, I would call David Larson, cause he's really the property manager and he communicates with all of the other people, so.
Okay.
It's really, I don't think the pines is gonna object because they, obviously they don't have to pay, so I mean, really on the master association. But I mean, I don't, I don't know what the due structure is over there, I mean, I'm just paying them trash.
Okay.
And we got the pickleball courts up at the Beacon.
No, it's, now it's a bar. So.
Is that on here?
It's not on the agenda, but it came in today, Carol sent it.
I just emailed it right before I left. Because like we just got the letter, um, and our copier's not working. Again, this time it's not working in another way. Um, so, Mr. Pickleball, um, wrote into the, um, liquor, the liquor board or liquor commission and asked for uh, a permit to serve alcohol at the new sports facility. And that was not anything he discussed, he just basically talked about converting the tennis courts to pickleball courts. And he thought he would have a little bit of retail, like selling some paddles and stuff like that. And so now, um, we have a request to approve a, you know, to input on the liquor, quest for a liquor license to sell alcohol at this pickleball court. And isn't that a different use? I mean, that building is basically, the use was
It did have all kinds of so, you know, banquet facilities and, you know, you could eat up there too.
Well, but that's the building that he's using, that he's renting, it's just the tennis courts.
And, and the entranceway to it, which, which was the bar area and, uh, was a place where they serve food and the tennis courts haven't been used for tennis since
Eighties.
I, yeah, since I was in school, um, it was a banquet facility for decades.
Okay, so what, so what are you saying, there's no?
It's, it's, it, there was, there was food service there for years, but it's been vacant for, what?
Thirty-five years anyway.
No, no, not vacant.
What do you mean?
Sorry. No, no, it, there's been food service in the tennis court area and the
Right.
What I'm, the lobby area for years.
So.
Um, but it, it, it's been vacant since the new owner took over.
Okay, that's pretty high.
Well, that's been quite a while.
Yeah, no, it's ten years.
Yeah.
So it, it, you can't say it's an existing use, it, it's, it was, but it's been vacant for ten years.
Well, I did call him up and I said, what is this? I just got this letter and you didn't mention anything about alcohol or, and I thought in order And you didn't mention anything about alcohol or, and I thought in order to sell alcohol, you had to have a restaurant. You have to serve food.
Yeah.
They go together. Um, you can't have one without the other. There's a certain certain requirements. Um, food with, goes with alcohol in the state of New Hampshire, so. Um, so it would be basically opening a restaurant.
So all of this is going to be in his area that he's paying for, not anything outside that, right?
I guess.
We don't, we don't know.
We don't know.
We doing something different than what he told us, but.
Well, then that might require a site plan then.
Or he could just come back and discuss with us what he's doing.
Yeah, another conceptual.
Okay.
What are you doing?
We'll just have him come back in.
I mean, be- before we ask him to come into a conceptual, if if he's gonna take the the bar, what used to be the lounge and the banquet facility or tennis court and serve food there, and it hasn't been done for ten years, it it does it need to go through site plan?
You know, technically, the use stays with the property until you
Change, change it. It's never been a change, other than it's been vacant.
Right, but it's still.
Well, but it's an abandoned use, basically.
Yeah, but it's still conforming.
Uh, we'd have to look at this.
I think the best thing is have him come in and talk to us and, you know, what's going on here.
Okay.
And obviously, I'm sure you you didn't just think about this this morning, you know what I mean?
Yeah, not if you apply for a liquor license.
Well, it's the letter that we got back from the liquor commission saying, you know, we read input here from the, to the town, from the town. So.
So you said you spoke with him?
No, they called and left a message on his phone.
Okay.
No, he didn't, he didn't pick up.
That was just today, right?
This evening, yeah, so. All right, I'll ask him to.
All right, so one other thing is a proposed fee increase. I really subject of all, go ahead.
Well, I, I don't think so.
Spot ass.
There.
I think so. So one of the things that the board selectmen asked was to um review the fee schedule that we have. Did you get my names from the other night?
Oh, yeah, I'll give.
I got like six copies here.
Yeah.
Wouldn't I give you, give you the extras? I only need one. So right now, the the town charges three hundred and fifty dollar flat fee for a land use permit. Okay, um, and that's for for um just a flat fee, so it doesn't matter what size your your house or um whatever building your building is. Um, we are spending far more than that in paying um Carol and Jade and Sean um and much of Karina's time overseeing the many different projects that are going on. And basically, the um property owners in town are subsidizing these construction costs through their tax base to pay for those four employees. We would like to um look at other options where more of that that cost burden. Now, now the town is not going to spend more money by implementing these fees. The town is just looking to um make it fairer on the taxpayers to not have the burden of, you know, you know, Sean's been working way more than we hired him to to oversee some of these sites and and it's and it's us who are paying for it, okay, as as property owners in the town, rather than the people up in the hill who are really the ones who are getting all of his service. I shouldn't say up in the hill. It's throughout town. Right, right. It's it's the users who should be paying it. So we looked at, and I get it, um, we looked at um Lebanon, Waterville, Conway, Sunapee, Wolfboro, Hampton and Thornton for what they would charge for these two houses. These are two realistic um houses that are being, that are, that are now, well, those are the permit numbers, twenty twenty-four zero four four, which is a single family home, and then twenty twenty-four zero fifty-one, also a single family home. Uh, one of them is a two point four million dollar estimated cost, thirty-eight oh nine square feet. They paid three fifty. The second one is a smaller, obviously, building. Um, nine hundred and fifty thousand estimated cost, thirty-three hundred square feet. Again, they paid three fifty. We took those same two and said, okay, if they were in Lebanon or Waterville, Conway, what would they pay? Well, Lebanon is way high at fourteen grand and fifty-eight hundred for those two projects. And you can see that that the the prices get down, but even the lowest of Thornton at six hundred and and Hampton between six and six seventy-one, still almost twice the co- the the price that Lincoln is charging. But then you get up into um, you know, the the Wolfborough through Conway and you're in the, you know, thousand to fifteen hundred amount. And then you get up into Waterville, um, where that that number goes to, well, depending on the size of the house, between ninety-six hundred and thirty-eight hundred. Some of them do it on a square foot basis. Some of them do it on an estimated cost basis. The board unanimously agreed that we should be doing it on a square foot basis because square foot's easy to to measure and and determine. An estimated cost is someone's ballpark guess before they even built something as what it's gonna cost.
It could be low.
Right, their estimate will be, will be low. Um, the square footage, you can't argue about that, you know? I- i- it is what it is. And if they say we're gonna build a thirty-eight hundred square foot building and it ends up being thirty-nine hundred, you bill them for the difference. Um, if someone bills says, oh, it's gonna be a million dollar house and it ends up being one point five, first of all, how are we ever gonna prove that? We don't know. We can't ask for bills. Anyway, we just thought it'd be simpler all around to just do square foot. So so on the left side, the second box down, w- w- we looked at forty-five cents, sixty cents, seventy-five and a dollar per square foot added on to our three hundred and fifty dollar flat initial fee. And you can see that that um those amounts that are gonna be paid would be between two and, say, four thousand dollars. And that is on the bigger of those two houses that we did that.
The thirty. Thirty-eight hundred square.
Thirty-eight hundred square foot house. So so there's someone who would be building a two point four million dollar house. And we're asking them to pay between two and four thousand dollars to to offset the cost of the town's employees to get through that process. And I should also include Ray. Um, you know, I know much of Ray's work, as we see it, is paid for by the applicant, you know, he's reviewing. But some of Ray's work is going out and looking at problems and situations out in the field. So so the town does have a cost for that um aspect of his work. Um, just wanted to br- bring this to you, and I don't think we need to to discuss this tonight as much as just understand what we're thinking. We can discuss it if you want, but then um weigh in on this maybe at the next meeting.
Do any of these towns on the right, do they assess impact fees as well?
I. Ones that that have.
Public water store anywhere, except maybe Hampton Village.
Yeah.
Um, to answer your question, this is just for the land use permit fees.
I understand. We're getting money in other ways besides they might not be getting.
We do, but we have other assets that that, again, are burdening the local taxpayers that we don't want to burden.
Well, you know, I kind of disagree that this is burdening the taxpayers. I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Because. Wants the houses and services, so we're getting a benefit by these people building, so we should make it as easy as possible for these people to construct homes. They would, they would keep our tax rate low.
And and I agree with that. Um, I just know the budget committee has has asked about revenue and asked the board to look at revenue. And I I thought this was one of the um areas where the town is is spending quite a bit of money on a small subset of of actual users.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty bucks is a little ridiculous.
I I mean, that's, it's, you almost might as well charge nothing, okay?
Well, not too many years ago, it was free for a building permit, land use permit.
Right, but but it used to be, it used to be that we didn't do much other than look at a piece of paper and sign it. Now we're letting, asking for affidavits. We're going out in the field and and working with some of the um developers and trying to alleviate problems before they become problems. Um, we're taking much more proactive and we're building on on more difficult areas. I mean, you know, you, when you look at some of these flat lots that, you know, if someone built a house on, there wasn't a lot to do. But now you're talking about developments like this where stormwater is an issue, where erosion, where where the building practices are an issue, um, the storage of of materials is an issue. Um, th- there's a lot more labor going into these steep, steeper homes, and that's kind of what we have left for land in this town. So I get your 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 desire to not increase fees and not charge people. The fact is we're not looking at spending more money. We're looking at making sure we're fair in how we um derive the revenue to offset costs. In addition to this structure, there's a couple of other things we're looking at changing. One is to increase the um fee or reach any retaining wall on a piece of property that's greater than four feet in height. Um, retaining walls are becoming far more prevalent and far more problematic as far as um overseeing them, making sure they're being done the way they're supposed to be done or the way they've been engineered, or getting them engineered, not letting just people put them in. Um, right now, we charge fifteen hundred dollars, put it in escrow and and basically pay um out of that, the expenses related to it. In addition to paying Ray Corbin or someone else to to deal with it, we um are again spending a lot of staff time. And again, it's it's Karina, it's Carol, it's Jade, and it's a lot, Sean, um overseeing that one particular little thing um uh of of many of the building projects going on. And we're asking to put in a five hundred dollar admin fee for a um.
That would be a permit fee.
A permit fee, right, for if you're gonna be building a um, well, it would be a a, an additional charge to a land is permit fee.
So we don't know how much.
Square foot charge. The square foot.
You're gonna charge a re- uh, square foot.
No, 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 combining this with the three.
Retaining walls gonna be five hundred plus whatever the engineering cost.
Correct. In addition to whatever building they're gonna build.
Right, no, it's a separate, you're making it a separate permit.
Separate, separate permit, a separate fee. All right, in addition to that, we talked about, and we're gonna work on language to look at, um, well, um, there are many instances where people will rough in a bathroom. Um, and then a year later, a month later, whatever, ten years later, build that bathroom, never notify us, so they don't pay any water and sewer tap fees on that. We're looking at charging for a roughed-in bathroom as a a entity that we charge the tap fees for.
Yeah.
Okay?
I can agree with that. I mean,
Yeah.
I don't know that's what they're doing while just kind of roughing in.
Exactly. And we want to do the same thing with irrigation systems and with uh hot tubs. So if you wire in a hot tub out in the back deck, but don't actually buy one, that there's the, whatever the fee is for that. Same thing with irrigation systems. If you put irrigation systems in the lawn and bring it back and there's a, there's a pipe sticking out of the wall in in the basement, it's still an irrigation system. The fact that you haven't connected it to the other, the feed pipe, and you're gonna do that later, maybe.
Which can't see Sean's taillights.
Exactly. So so we're looking to charge for that. Um, you know, i- i- you can't go back and 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 go into someone's home and investigate what they've done. So charging upfront is, it seems to be the the fairer way to do that. So that's what we talked about. Um, and and I don't know if the board wants to weigh in on this tonight, think about it and do it next meeting, but but that's where we're at. Did you want to add something?
No.
I just tell you hand up. Oh, okay, okay, all right. You're waving like, no, you're saying this wrong. Yeah.
Does anyone have anything else?
Oh, it's all good stuff.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, can we, can we put this on the agenda for next week? I mean, next meeting?
Yeah. We can't, I don't, we got a few things on the agenda already for the, right, we, we can try. Why don't we just see how many things we have on the agenda?
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone have anything else now?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Yeah.
Your batteries out.
Yep.